Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for Candidates for Granite Falls City Council Positions 1, 2, and 3. I am your moderator, Vicky Roberts-Gassler, member of the League, former president, and currently the Secretary of the Board. Candidates for Granite Falls City Council are Stephen Glenn and Deanna Jones for Position 1, David Griggs and Scott Morrison for Position 2, and Tom Fitzgerald for Position 3. All candidates have been invited. Deanna Jones is not participating in this forum. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in this forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties. We do take positions on issues which we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. Ground rules for this forum were sent ahead of time to all the candidates. Let me briefly explain the question and answer period rules. Opening and closing questions have been shared with the candidates. Other questions have not been shared. However, we have made each candidate aware of the issue areas the forum plans to cover, and we thank all the community members who sent us recommendations about local issues. I will pose the question. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond. 90 seconds will be allowed for answers to the final question. I will state the change clearly. We are using a countdown timer visible to all candidates. It shows elapsed time and alerts candidates when there are 15 seconds left and when the time is up. Time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. When you see the timer turn red and hear the chime, you're done. For the order of the questions, I will change the starting order for each questions and rotate through all the candidates to ensure random and fair sequence. The order for the first question will be Mr. Glenn, Mr. Griggs, Mr. Morrison, and Mr. Fitzgerald. Let's begin. The first question goes to Mr. Glenn. Mr. Glenn, what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Qualifications and experience? I have served on the city council for the last number of years. I've actually lost track now. I got a degree in business management and marketing, and which is hard to believe, but that comes in quite handy when looking at and answering questions that arise in the community. I've been a volunteer with the Boy Scouts of America for over a decade, working with youth and adults, young men and young women, all over Snohomish County and the surrounding counties up to the Canadian borders. And being able to interact with people from all walks of life and help answer questions and listen and understand is an important quality in a council member, I think.
Thank you very much. Question now goes to Mr. Griggs. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Hey, well, I've served 30 years active duty in the United States Navy, and I've served the last 12 years of that time in an executive leadership role. Finishing off, we were the command staff for a carrier air wing of about 1,900 personnel. I did receive a bachelor's in business administration and a master's in business administration as well before I retired from the Navy and moved on. Currently, a member of the Snohomish County Veterans Assistance Fund Executive Board. Our role is to advise the county council on matters pertaining to the homeless veterans in Snohomish County area. I'm president of the HOA that I live in, about 327 homes in our association, and just happy to be here, I think.
Thank you very much. We've lost Mr. Morrison, who should be next. That's going to require some quick thinking on my part, but we'll see what we can manage with this. Mr. Fitzgerald, the question goes to you. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Well, I've served here at Granite Falls the last 14 years as a councilman and seen them. Taken training at WUC and I've received my certificate of municipal leadership, and I have enough classes, actually have my advanced certificate of municipal leadership. I attend to those classes, what they have at the annual meeting, as well as during the year in Olympia and other places in the state in regards to training on budget and planning and all those things that people don't know what we do at city council. I have been a community service-minded person since my days as a Boy Scout and Eagle Scout, 1986, and served my community as the president of Granite Falls Little League, mentor at the school for the school district, and I coach many sports at the school as well, and I'm also a scout leader who does the Eagle Board of Reviews.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fitzgerald, are you ready to answer what qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
No, you want Morrison.
I read off my script. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you. What makes me qualified is I have been a resident of Granite Falls for the last seven years. Six of those years I have been involved with the Granite Falls Planning Commission, helped planning for the future of the city. I am currently employed by the Granite Falls School District in one of their schools. As the volunteer, I volunteer with scouts, both locally here in Granite Falls as well as Lake Stephens, and I am also a 4-H volunteer throughout the county.
Thank you very much. So, we move on to our second question. Mr. Griggs, you're our first this time. What are the biggest challenges facing Granite Falls, and what are its greatest strengths?
I think one of its greatest strengths is just the ideal charm of the small-town, you know, feel that we have. We have a lot of potential to bring in local tourism and business, I believe. There's thousands of people that go up into the mountains that are close by and go hiking, et cetera. But I feel that they just drive by and they just want to, you know, as they're driving by, they look and say, okay, there's Granite Falls, and then keep on going. I'd like to see us kind of do something that would be able to capture that business and those people that came by and get them to stop and dine with us and spend their money in our town. Growth is another big area, and I know that we have an issue with our sewage treatment facility. We're not able to really grow much more until we get some upgrades to that, so that'll be a big issue facing us that I know that we're already addressing, but so those would be some of the issues that I'll be looking at.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, what are the biggest challenges facing Granite Falls and what are its greatest strengths?
I think the biggest challenges we're facing is the growth, and some of the growth is mandated and maybe not always wanted. People love to do Granite Falls for the beauty of Granite Falls and because of what Granite Falls is, and I think that as a leader, it's important that we control that growth and guide it to make sure that in 25 years, people don't look back and see what we've done and say, oh, what were they thinking? And that's the role I wanted to fill. I ran for my first position under the guise of controlled growth and responsible growth. We're going to have issues with the treatment plan and with the county trying to force us to hit a number that's going to be pretty large, and as more people move here, it's going to have issues that we're going to have to address as far as recreation, and that's our advantage and our plus, and then also traffic and parks and places for people to
Thank you. Mr. Morrison. Challenges and strengths?
For the challenges of this town, the issue we are running into again is the sewage area for us to be able to grow. That is a major concern for whoever is going to be on the council, because it's going to be a major decision for the next couple of years. Of course, the beauty is here, and as we like to advertise, we are the gateway to the mountain loop. And we do need to take advantage of that and have people stop here, spend their money here. We've got plenty of small businesses that we need to support, both those of us that live here locally as well as those who travel through and visit Granite Falls. That's our, what we need to do is keep growing.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn, what are the biggest challenges facing Granite Falls and what are its greatest strengths?
I have to echo what the other candidates have said. Growth is one of the biggest challenges. The sewer moratorium that we're in and the challenges there, we're going to have challenges with that whether we grow or not right now. The traffic passing through town, one of the challenges is we're a small community with a very small boundary, but we serve a huge area, which means our tax base is very limited. Strengths, I think the biggest strengths that the community has is one, our citizens are very generous, very resourceful, and very outgoing in participating and putting on events and helping out one another. And I think city staff is another huge strength that our city has that a lot of cities can't boast, and they've overcome some great challenges and have left us in a very good position financially that other cities can't say they're in.
Thank you. So, for our third question, we begin with Mr. Fitzgerald. What are the issues, if any, in your and Granite Falls arising from the pandemic? And how would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
I didn't catch the beginning of what you said, but I believe you said what issues have arrived from the pandemic?
Yes.
And that's a really difficult one, because there are some that there are some folks that think government has maybe taken too large of a role in handling the pandemic or has mishandled it, and as a responsible city, I think we need to follow what the county and the state guidelines have given us to maintain the ability to still qualify for funding and be responsible in our role as leaders to set a good example. And then there have been some windfalls from this that in a financial manner, from money that's come in, the CARES Act, and now some more money coming, and I think it's a responsible, it's important that we're responsible in how we spend that money and that we show good leadership by setting a good example.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, what issues, if any, in your and Granite Falls have been arising from the pandemic? And how would you address them if you believe there are such issues? Mr. Morrison, you're muted. And I can't unmute you. Yes.
Sorry. The biggest issues that are affecting us because of the pandemic is affecting a lot of the businesses throughout the country. Limiting what services can be open and what can't be open. But I will be, I'm grateful that most of the businesses here in Granite Falls have been very resourceful and been able to work around the issues. Too many other businesses in other parts of the country have businesses have shut down. But I think we've been lucky here in Granite Falls with the businesses being able to survive. It's kind of hard for us to take control of it, because right now it is at a national level that's running a lot of the rules and regulations for it. We just need to follow so that we can control, keep those businesses going.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn, what are the issues, if any, in Granite Falls arising from the pandemic? And how would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
I think for me, what I've seen is one of the big issues that have arisen from the pandemic is people have forgotten how to talk to each other. People have forgotten how to be patient and understanding, and I think that's one of the things, the challenges that we're going to have as everybody retreated to social media and online communication. The social norms went away that helped keep things civil and helped keep, I think, helped give people an open mind in talking to each other about their struggles, challenges that they have. We've got a very diverse community with people from all walks of life and all different situations, and the ability, as we can get back to normal, to have more opportunities to reach out and talk to one another, I think, is going to be critical to help us move forward and face the other challenges that we have as a city.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs, what are the issues, if any, in your city or town arising from the pandemic? And what, how would you address them if you believe they exist?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest issues, as already been mentioned by the other candidates, is, you know, the social distancing aspect and how that's affected our businesses, and luckily, they have been able to survive for the most part, even though we have a limited base of potential customers, just being in a small town. So they've actually done pretty well, I think. The big social distancing aspect really plays an effect. We have an upcoming festival, the Railroad Days. I'm helping the Chamber of Commerce, so some certain aspects of that, and I know that's going to be a challenge with the mask mandate for outdoor venues, et cetera. So it'll be, it'll just be interesting to see how that pans out and whether we're able to continue it and be successful at it. How many people will attend, et cetera, so.
Thank you. Okay, fourth question. And by now, I am so confused with my order that I'm going back to what I had in my script and will hope that it all works out in the end. Thank you for your understanding. Mr. Fitzgerald, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues? Mr. Fitzgerald first.
Initiatives. I'm not sure that we have any new initiatives that I have seen, but I know that we have supported the different groups in the community that provide those services. We've given them venues and avenues from which to work. I don't believe that the city of Granite Falls should become a provider of social services, but should support those groups that do provide those services, and I think that we've done that. And I would support initiatives that would continue to provide support to those services, whether it's a religious group, county, Snohomish County Health Department, or another outside agency like Volunteers America. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
I don't, like Councilmember Fitzgerald, we don't currently have any specific initiatives, but when the county and other organizations bring forth initiatives and look for the city's support, we do support them, whether it's mental health issues and homelessness. We've helped with the food banks in town, providing them with support to carry on, and the various different organizations. And I think, again, that's one of the great things about the community, is so many people and so many different organizations come forward to help out and come forward to solve a problem, so that the few people that are sitting on the city council aren't just trying to solve it on their own, but the community's coming forward, and that's the type of stuff that I like to support and that we can get the backing of the community on.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
Well, I think relying heavily on partner organizations is one big way to help out getting the community involved. Currently with the Snohomish County Veterans Assistance Fund Executive Board that I'm a member of, we do a lot of work with the homeless veterans in the Snohomish County area. We partner with veteran service organizations, et cetera. We provide vouchers for shelter, medical, all sorts of different options for the homeless veteran population. I think the same thing could be done for those who are not veterans as well. There's lots of organizations we could partner with and then help out. And then any other way that the county would give us any kind of guidance or request for help would be able to help out as well, as much as we could.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, food insecurity, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
Well, like others have said, Granite Falls is a great community for helping each other. A lot of the food banks' services are volunteers from the community. This community donates quite a bit to that on an individual basis, and we've got a great network for when there is those needs. As far as the mental health issues, I believe that we would do fine helping the county if they give us some guidance and we just give us some good leadership, and then we can promote that here in Granite Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone, right? Fifth question. Starting with Mr. Glenn, what measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Granite Falls? And what should be provided so the community, to the community's elderly population, especially those who need support services and housing?
One of the things that we've strived to do on city council is eliminate a lot of red tape and extraneous processes and fees associated with building housing, with buying a house, that sort of thing, that's in our control in the city. City limits, we can't necessarily control the price that people will charge in houses that they develop, apartments, that sort of thing, but we certainly have made it more affordable, so people that are wanting to build more lower-income housing can do so in our city without having to pay absorbent fees upfront. As far as the elderly goes, I know there are a number of programs that the city offers to, for reduced utility billing and as well as other services with other organizations in the county.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs, what measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Granite Falls? And what should be provided to this community's elderly population?
Well, first off, the elderly, I think, really deserve a lot. They're oftentimes get left behind and forgotten about, so I firmly believe that we should do everything we can to help them out as much as possible, whether that's reduced fees, reduced utility fees through some sort of either vouchers or assistance as much as we can provide would be a good way to start. Affordable housing also goes, you know, for low income and that sort of thing. I think the best way to do that is to, as one of the other members mentioned, just lower our fees and our costs for builders to come in and build some of the housing that's designed for those demographics, and just do all we can to help them out.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, what measures would you support to keep housing options affordable? And what should be provided to the community's elderly population?
Well, right now with the Planning Commission, we are working on some policies, procedures for being able to add a, lack of another word, mother-in-law house, so that if we do have somebody living in the house, we can actually build another house on the same lot, as long as it's family members, so that way we can keep our families together, whether it's an elderly person that owns the property and brings family in, or if the family that lives there wants to bring elderly families in. We can do that, and as the others have said, we are trying to make it easy, easier for people to build new homes with less fees. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, housing options affordable and providing for the elderly? Need them unmute.
There we go. I fully support having the council make decisions to change things about zoning.
Whoops. You're muted again. You're muted.
Sorry. I don't know what happened. I said I fully support the idea of having the zoning of the city changed to allow for multi-generational families to live in one property and have additional accommodations for somebody who may want to have their mother or mother-in-law or elderly stay and live with them. We also, in the city, have reduced utilities for the elderly who qualify. This might not be popular in the other answer I give as far as housing. Housing, I'm a capitalist, and I believe that the process be aligned and easy is our responsibility, but people move to Granite Falls, don't necessarily want to have a bunch of apartments in Granite Falls. Young people might want to have those apartments, but the affordable housing might be the responsibility to county and the state, and might be better zoned to be located in other areas that are more populated, centered, located.
Okay, thank you. Beginning with Mr. Griggs, what are the most pressing environmental issues that Granite Falls faces? And what would you propose to address them?
Well, environmental issues, I think, kind of go back to growth in a way, too. I mean, if we grow too big, obviously you'll have environmental impacts from their wetlands, you know, pollution thing. So I believe that's an area that just needs to be monitored closely and try to work with the state and county officials and some of the mandated growth that we'll be forced to do, just to make sure that we're doing it smartly. We're paying attention to how that growth is affecting us and do what we can to mitigate them.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, most pressing environmental issues and what you'd like to do about them?
Well, working on the Planning Commission, we've been lucky in that we do work quite a bit with the county, and we are lucky in that the environmental impacts, we are very good about maintaining it and not building in endangered areas, and luckily Granite Falls does not have very many of those.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, environmental issues and what you propose to do to address them?
I think our biggest environmental issues are going to be related to growth, which is going to increase our traffic, our pollution, and then some of the side effects of that. I think we signed a responsible contract with management to continue recycling program, even if they're not continuing it on their end, we're providing it on our end. I think that we're going to have, as we have more people come to town and grow, we're going to have more of the side effects that come with that. So providing people with the proper education and avenues to do their recycling and to be responsible in how they reduce their amount of footprint and pollution, we can encourage and support.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn, pressing environmental issues and what you propose to do about them? Mr. Glenn, you're muted. Enter screen is frozen. Enter screen is frozen. Okay, we've lost Mr. Glenn, I believe. I hope Karen can do something to get him back. And we will move on to what is our final question. For this one, you get 90 seconds. Uh, and I will go ahead and stick with the order that I had. Which would start with Mr. Fitzgerald. So 90 seconds. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of your community? Take yourself off mute.
Um. In my experience in the community, that's one of our biggest strengths is our, our people. They say it takes a village, and we definitely have a village here. And we support each other and people in Granite are, I I don't want to say like nowhere else, but it uh it's where the, you have people who treat each other the way people in Granite will come and rally for each other. Um, working at the food bank, I at handout, I see that there's a need for the support. Um, and people are very generous and very giving in Granite Falls. Um, I think we are going to have a wake-up when um, we have the county kind of growth we're have and what it would take financially in the form of of us seeing our bills go up and our utilities to pay for that growth. I'm a big advocate of responsible growth and along that lines, I want growth to pay for growth. And I want the developers and the contractors and the people who are going to make the money to pay for that growth, not the existing citizens of my constituents who live here and have limited funds and um fixed incomes to have to have their utilities go up in order to pay for our treatment plans and expansion and other growth that's going to have to happen to accommodate the numbers of people we're going to have.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs, 90 seconds. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to our attention?
Uh, well, I think to echo one of the other members, um, you know, I, one of the things that I'm sort of running on, so to speak, is is responsible growth as well. It's kind of a focus. Um, I started, I think, started down that journey before I really realized even uh what some of the mandates were that we had coming at us that we're facing from uh from state and county levels. Uh, so I definitely want to make sure that we're uh we're getting those uh issues uh done responsibly. Um, I do not like the uh the small lots that you see on some of the neighboring towns and cities that uh causing the high density growth. I'd like to to keep us uh as much as possible into a small town feel with the bigger lots uh and that sort of thing, and a little less high density growth. Um. I think informational wise, uh, since I'm new to the organization as far as uh political, uh, it's my first time running for any kind of an office, uh, just want to point out that I do have the leadership uh background uh with an executive position in the military, the the MBA. Um, my work with the county on the uh the homeless veteran issue. Uh, I think I would be uh well-suited to to join the ranks of the city council and help contribute, and it would be an honor to do so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Morrison. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to our attention?
Well, like I said earlier, I've been a member of this community for seven years. Um, so I care very deeply for what happens here in Granite Falls, uh, both currently and in the future. Um, myself and one of the other candidates did have a uh talk about the fact that during the election we had less than uh 21% turnout for the election. And it's a um mail-in election, so it isn't that hard to do. Um, I would definitely hope that we have a better turnout. And thanks to you guys, more people can see uh what we stand for and what we're uh trying to do for the future of Granite Falls. It's a great community. Um, I hope to help lead it so that we can uh keep the feeling we have, but still be able to survive with uh all the businesses that we need to come in, smaller businesses that need to come in and keep everybody going as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have fun with the technology, don't we? Uh, we have Mr. Mr. Glenn back and he missed out on, I think, a couple of these questions. So let's give him about a two and a half minute timer, if we can manage that. And you can talk to us about, oh, just one question. I'm getting noticed yet. Tell us what you uh would like to bring to our attention that we haven't asked or that you weren't here for when we did ask it.
Um. Something that we haven't asked about. I can't really think of anything, you know, pressing that we haven't already talked about. I think our biggest challenge we have as a city is is growth. Um, that's mandated. And I think a lot of citizens don't understand that we don't have total control over the numbers. We do have some control on how and what that growth looks like to a degree. But we have a lot of unfunded mandates that we have handed down to us from the federal government to the state government, to the county, to us. Um, and that, that was one of my biggest eye-openers um when joining the council is going through um that those processes. And it's uh, it's something that's hard to explain everything, but it's even harder to get people to understand. And it's, we've got a great environment and opportunity for people to get together and uh come and learn about the challenges that we have as a city. Um, and the challenges that we have as uh council members and city staff, um, planning commission, everybody that's involved in uh in putting together these um, the responsible growth projections and planning that goes into making sure that we have a community that supports its residents um as best we can. One of the challenges that we have is we're a tiny community that supports a much larger community. Um, and trying to figure out how to do that without having a larger community. That is also, you know, a big challenge in maintaining roads or that sort of thing. But it's, it's a good challenge and it's something that uh everybody involved in is up to handling head on. We're excited for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're very sorry about the technical issues that caused you to be absent for a few minutes there. Uh, the League appreciates these candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of the forum and our other forums will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and on YouTube, on our YouTube channel. You can find links at L W V S N O H O dot org. We encourage you to explore additional information about these and all the candidates. The Snohomish County voter pamphlet will be mailed to residents starting on October uh 13th. Uh, vote four one one dot org, sponsored by the League of Women Voters, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. Finally, general election ballots will be mailed on October 14th, and Election Day is November 2nd. Please vote. This concludes our candidate forum. Again, thank you all for joining us.